We're all here and ready to begin. And glad you're all here on this holiday season. Everybody's happy and chatty. It's nice. We have a staff meeting and commission meeting next week.
That's correct.
And the week after that, we don't have commission meeting. And the day after Christmas, I don't know that we need a staff meeting unless...
It's my birthday, by the way.
It's your birthday? Well, so you said that because you want a present?
A bunch of them. Maybe we should make it a holiday. It'll be a holiday.
Okay, so the 26th then, in honor of David's birthday, maybe we won't have a staff meeting.
Dang, it's a training distractor.
Okay, well unless something else happens, those staff meetings are not on. We are off. Okay. Commissioners, before we get started, anything that you want to bring up? Richard? David?
Nope.
Okay, well then, Mr. Manager, let's go.
All right, Commissioners, we have a full agenda for today's staff meeting. We've got several topics we're going to talk about. First thing I'd like to say is between Bob Layton and John Tomlin and I, we refereed the counselors yesterday who finally came to a resolution on the ground sublease for LETC. So we will have that on the agenda next week. And the city will do it on the 19th, and we'll do it on the 20th. And that was a good time yesterday, but it took about two and a half hours, I guess, to kind of get through that. But that is done. The first thing we're going to talk about today is the budget schedule. We're going to let Lorian do that, and then she'll be followed by Lindsay, who will talk about the Reagan building. And then finally, we'll end up what we really were, came here today and will spend the most amount of time on, is we'll let Eileen and Glenda, I'll start out, but Eileen and Glenda will lead the discussion on the new pay plan and performance management evaluation plan. Two years in the making, so we're excited about unveiling that for vote on it tomorrow. Without further ado, Lorian, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lorian Shaw Walter-Arri, your Budget Director. As we're putting together the 2019 budget development process, we need to know from you if there's any chance that you want to do a property tax lid election. If you do, then the budget would need to be adopted by June 1st. If not, then the handout you just received would be the proposed budget calendar with the more normal schedule of an adoption on August 15th.
So the first question is, do we think we want to do that? I mean, your recommendation for the budget is that if we go according to normal routine, that's not going to be necessary, right?
Right. But it's up to you if there's any chance that you would like to do that.
Does anyone have? I don't think this commission wants to do that.
Okay, great. Well, then we'll have more information as we develop the process, but for your review is the initial calendar.
Commissioners, any questions? Comments? Everything we need to know is right here.
For now, yes.
Okay. All right. I don't see them on with a comment or question.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess it's my turn then. I will go after you. You all should have a handout for me at your seats.
So you may recall, Commissioners, a few weeks ago, we talked about the possibility of bonding the cash-funded portion of the Ronald Reagan building to see if there was any interest. And so that was at your staff meeting on November 21st. We have worked with our bond council and municipal advisor to come up with what a timeline would need to look like if we did choose to do that. We also have worked with Tanya Cole to get an estimate, because we do still have folks moving into the building now, to get an estimate of what the final costs could be for that. And so we have narrowed down the potential eligible expenses to about 3.58 million. And we could go through the process then of bonding that cash. It would need to be completed by the end of March. And so the timeline that you see in front of you would be pretty tight. There's not a lot of room for flexibility. We would need to adhere to this pretty tightly, so that at one of your first business meetings in January, we would need to have your permission via resolution, basically to state our intent to move forward with that process. And then you can see kind of the staff work that would need to occur with, finally, the bond sale occurring on February 21st. And then we would close on the deal essentially at the end of March and get that cash. Since we last talked, there have been a number of things that have come up, and so I just wanted to put a few things on your radar for how that cash could be used. Certainly, we've already talked about the CAD and RMS system, but we also know that we have some radio system replacements in the long-term forecast that we'll need to do, and right now we plan to do with cash. And we do actually have a deficit projected in 2019 and 2020, in those years in which we would plan to do that. We also could use it toward other capital improvement projects, certainly an administration building, or other things that come up throughout the process, and of course, economic development support. We know that you'll have an MOU before you tomorrow that could require some county financial support. This would be another option for a potential funding source. So those are just some things to keep on the radar for how we could choose to use this cash. It would simply be cash that goes into the general fund and could be used for any purpose that you wanted. So I guess at this point, last time, there was kind of not general support to move forward with this. And so I think at this point, we just needed a decision as to whether you'd like to consider this. Certainly, there's still plenty of opportunities to say no, but if you would like to even consider it, we need to let our bond council and our municipal advisor know so that we can get the paperwork done into you on time. So with that, I will turn discussion over to you.
Okay, Commissioners, is there a comment or question you have for Lorian at this time? Today, you are not asking for a hard decision.
Right. Just whether we need to start putting together an agenda item, start working with folks for your consideration to move forward on a formal business meeting agenda.
Okay. Well, go ahead, David.
Well, I guess what I'd need to know is exactly how much money we'd be getting out of that, and exactly items that we could use it for. You gave me some general ideas, but again, if we're going to use that cash for doing something, it ought to be used for something that's going to last us 30, 50 years.
Sure. Okay.
And I'd like to know what those things are.
Okay. So maybe I'll prepare a memo for the county manager, and then we can figure out a way to walk the halls on that, engage next level of support. Is that an acceptable approach?
It seems to me we're just trying to find reasons to borrow money. We already have a plan for radios and stuff, and I don't get why, we already have a plan, and we have cash to use, so we should just do it. Why incur additional costs? I don't know. It's like we're on a fishing expedition just because we want to borrow money. So I'm going to have, it's going to be a very, I mean, if we do an admin building, that's something I could support borrowing money for. But not this sort of stuff. We need a plan for this stuff. I'm not going to borrow money for corporate welfare projects either. I may be on the losing end of that one, but that's not appropriate. I mean, we're just coming up with reasons. I don't know. I mean, I don't do that in my personal life. See, that's the problem. I don't just find ways to go borrow money. I only do it if I have to. We don't have to, but I'm puzzled by this. You mentioned that if we enter into a bonding process, that we would alleviate some of our deficit spending in some future years?
Right. You would have a decision through your 2019 budget process to basically decide whether there was an acceptable use of fund balance in the general fund, which we've done a couple of years, or if you, for the 2018 budget, you all wanted no deficit in the general fund. And so if that was the case, then we would need to make some offsetting reductions to accommodate for that then.
Okay. Questions? If you would, I think, my opinion is, is we need to start this moving forward, but you need to come around with some of the questions that David asked, but can you have us maybe a pro and a con sheet developed?
Sure.
Something in that format, and then tell us how this impacts some of our restrictions that we have as far as total bonding and debt service amounts, and just a sheet to tell us that.
Absolutely.
But in general, I'm inclined to, all of our long-term projects like this, I'm inclined to want to bond them. So I'll take the information you provide for me, and we'll give you direction from that.
Okay. Yes, sir.
As far as projected deficits, we always have projected deficits since I've been here.
We have, although I would point out that for 2021 and 2022, and the forecasts in the budget that you all approved, we actually don't have any deficits in those outer years.
Okay, but you're about 19.
Right. 19 and 20, when we have those radio replacements.
19 and 20. I don't recall ever even thinking about borrowing money to cover deficits. We make adjustments. I'm troubled by the idea of borrowing money to, borrowing money to cover debts or projected deficits, that's a troubling, I can't believe, if even suggested, that would be, I could never use that as a reason.
Yeah, Lindsay, can I have a question for you? Could this money be used for the Reagan building, or excuse me, the Spirit deal?
Absolutely.
Or the admin building?
Yes.
What's the difference? I know, I think Joe had talked about the tax-exempt nature of this type of money. Can you explain that aspect of it?
Sure. So based on state, well, there's two laws actually that come into play here. There's the state budget law with the new property tax lid. Under that legislation, we would need to meet, under this scenario, we are essentially taking advantage of the 18 months since we moved in rule, and that allows us to have this as tax-exempt debt. Depending on how or if Spirit incentive is done, that may or may not be able to be taxed exempt, depending on how an entity is set up to essentially own a building, and how the commission opts to pay for that. But certainly, if we got this cash from this bond sale, that would be more than half of the proposed incentive that would come from the county. And so that could lead to some other options about exploring just straight cash funding, rather than doing any type of bonding deal for Spirit itself. So there's lots of options still to talk about, and we know that by the end of the first quarter, we need to have all of those funding items outlined and done. And so if there was going to be a Spirit incentive in addition to any bonding for this, we almost could do them at the same time and would want to do them at the same time. That would save us some issuance costs, but that may be a discussion for a later day.
Okay. Mr. Counselor?
Lindsay, what does it come to, exist tax-free bonds and going forward, other tax-free, if Congress changes the law and doesn't allow that to happen?
Actually, we would be, we wouldn't be able to do any tax-exempt debt. It would increase our overall costs. For example, right now, we have to, the Build America, Help America Build Bonds, if you remember those, we have 2009 and 2010 series. We already planned to do an extraordinary bond redemption of the 2009 Build America Bonds in 2019, so we'll pay off that roughly $3 million and be done. And so we won't see any penalty on the 2010. Our penalty would be about $175,000, but of course, we'll look to do something similar, a redemption maybe in 2020 to avoid that, so.
Would I be right, though, if the Congress cannot retroactively wipe out the tax-free bonds that have been issued? I mean, they can't?
Not, anything but the Build America Bonds, you're right. Those Build America Bonds, they are wiping out that tax-free status for us.
If they pass it?
If they pass it, yes.
And going forward, we just wouldn't be allowed to do that?
Right. And so state law would need to catch up, and the budget law would need to catch up, and I'm not sure how that would look yet.
Okay, then, have we given you enough direction now that you want to give us some information, and then we'll push this decision to a decision?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank you.
All right.
All right, Commissioners, at this point, we'll go into the, talk to you about the new pay plan and performance management evaluation plan that we would like to implement. And as I went around and talked to you last week, we talked about, you know, this has really been for me a two-year review, study, and implementation. So this is, for me, a pretty big deal. Eileen, if you probably go ahead and start making your way to the microphone. But for me, it's been important, and I have a few remarks to make sure I appropriately set this up. It's been important to me since I started here to address employee compensation issues, and several changes have already been implemented since I've been here. And if you remember, for the new Commissioners, when I got here, I implemented a 90-day letter. This was one of the points in my 90-day letter of the five points that I issued that I wanted to address immediately. And so for two years, I've been working on that. Since this last January, some employees received an additional adjustment to their salary to address compression and progression pay issues. So last budget season, if you remember during the budget plan, I went, I came to you, and we talked about those compression and progression issues. And we used the budget for this year to tackle those issues. And so those changes were already implemented, and they're implemented today. That set us up for a future change to the pay plan. 2017, we made those adjustments to employee salaries, and 2018, for the budget, we came to you. And to keep those changes that we made for the 2017 budget in place, I asked you for the 2.5% across-the-board increase that would affect everybody, and also a 0.5% pay bracket adjustment to the right that would also help out those who were maxed out in their pay band. So what I'm asking for 2019 is that all employees receive a general pay adjustment, and employees will be eligible for a one-time pay for performance bonus based on the results of their performance evaluation. In this, I had talked over this last two years, and especially this year, to all the Commissioners, and heard their concerns on different things that they wanted to see. I have also gone around to the different parts of the county and talked to large pieces of this organization in roundtables, roundtable discussions, and have presented basically my, what I saw as the solution to this. Earlier this year, I also unfolded and sent to the staff a policy implementation guidance that really talked about the tenets of what I thought, encapsulating everything that I heard from you, and also encapsulating things that I heard from the employees. But those were what made up the guidelines and tenets of my policy implementation to the staff, guidance to the staff. The old evaluation process, if you remember it, is extremely long, labor-intensive, was very inconsistent and subjective, and also it almost became perfunctory. Because it was so long and cumbersome, a lot of people would just take off, years passed, changed the name, changed the date, and put forth for that evaluation, making it almost not worth the evaluation, because they're not truly getting counseled, they're not truly getting developed and mentored by their supervisor. The new evaluation process, this promotes that feedback and fosters increased communication between employees and supervisors, but it's specifically allowing for that mentoring, allowing for the developing, supporting what counseling truly means between a supervisor and a subordinate. It fully supports our organization's strategic plan, which for me is very important in it. It has the SMART goals that are tied to Cedric County goals, and part of the evaluation process is tied to how well each employee demonstrates the county values. So they will also be rated on and enforced through the county values. So no longer county values, just a placard up on the wall that you aspire to be, they are truly a part of the evaluation process that the supervisor and the subordinate actually talk about. And if you remember, those are service to community, ethical behavior, duty to be accountable, good stewardship, wellness of community, integrity in all we do, communicate effectively both internally and externally, and then knowledge, fostering environment competency, and continuous learning, which this certainly encapsulates. In that, that's spelled Cedric. Our employees truly are our most valuable resource, and this compensation plan and PME process will help to better recognize them for their work. Now I'll turn it over to Eileen and let her start the briefing.
All right. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Eileen McNichol, your Chief HR Officer, and as the Manager said, I'm going to provide you a briefing on our new pay plan and our new performance management system, PME. I've provided you a copy of the presentation and the handouts that I'm going to review with you. It might be easier for you to look at the handouts than to see what's on the screen, but either way, you've got the information in front of you. I'll provide you information on the purpose and benefits of PME, the historic review of our rollout, the results from the pilot that we conducted with the Department of Corrections, what we're going to be using for success measures, and our next steps in our February 1st PME launch. Our new pay plan that will pay out in January 2019 is for all employees, but it does not include the Sheriff's Office employees. There are two components. There's the general pay adjustment and the pay-for-performance bonus. The general pay adjustment, or the GPA, is where all employees will receive a set amount that's been approved by you in that year's budget. It'll be added to the base rate of pay on January 1st of the year that follows the PME year. The GPA will compound annually. It will increase the employee's base salary. The pay-for-performance bonus is for all employees who are covered by the PME policy. They'll be eligible to receive a set amount as approved by you in that year's budget. The bonus will be based upon the employee's PME rating tier from their final PME score at the end of the evaluative year. Employees will receive a non-compounding bonus payment, which means it doesn't increase the employee's base salary. It'll be paid out in a lump sum in the year that follows the PME year. And periodically, we will also need to adjust our pay structure, just like how we're adjusting it this year by half a percent. The new PME program, its purpose, yes, sir?
So we're going to increase the well-pay structure every year?
No, not periodically. Maybe every two years. It will depend. That'll be a determination we'll have to make, but it will not be every year, unless you all determine that it needs to be. The purpose of the PME program is to provide an effective performance management and evaluation process, providing alignment with our strategic goals. The benefits of PME is that it provides a clear performance standards for our employees, and it gives a consistent and fair performance evaluation process. It provides ongoing feedback, coaching, and guidance for our employees, and quarterly performance ratings are provided so our employees know how well they're doing. Employees being connected to strategic goals is going to help with our employee engagement. Our PME process captures best practice for a performance management evaluation process, going away from the once-a-year evaluation and providing regular, ongoing feedback with quarterly scoring. It uses competencies and a performance calibration team to set and ensure fair performance standards and evaluations for employees. The Manager wanted a more meaningful and effective performance evaluation process, and we started this effort back in January of 2016. We started working on the PME process and developing the forms to support it in January of 2016, and have been working through that throughout this period of time. We piloted the PME process with the Department of Corrections, starting in February, and it ran through October. We also provided a template to all the departments to revise our job descriptions. We started that effort in April, and what the template did was it provided a consistent format, so all of our jobs could identify the three main job requirements and the competencies required to be successful in the position. We'll also be using those competencies to help with recruiting, interviewing, and hiring. We'll be using it to manage in this process and also developing our employees. We did management introductory training, so all of our management teams could understand this new process. We did that in April and June. And then we started our performance calibration team workshops. We started those in July. Performance calibration teams were developed by each division, identified the people they wanted to be on those teams, and the purpose of a performance calibration team is to create a fair and consistent ratings for employees' job performance. And then, of course, now we're doing the launch training. We started that in November, and we hope to complete it by the end of the year. The PME components are the employee's job description. That's where it starts. The job descriptions identify what's expected of the employee with the three main job responsibilities. It sets the foundation for fully-meeting expectations rating, which is a three. The PME tools are the PME form and three PME rating guides, two that'll be used for all employees, an additional one for supervisors, and then the career pathways development planning tools. All of these PME tools can be found out, can be found on E-line under county forms, and they are also in the handouts that I'm going to review with you. There is one PME form that is for supervisors and one for non-supervisors. You have the supervisor form with you that I'm going to review with you this morning. It looks like this. As the Manager said, the old form we had was very long, it was cumbersome, it was confusing. This one is one page, front and back. It is a fillable PDF, and this is the working document that the supervisor and employee will be using throughout the year. They're going to be having regular, ongoing meetings throughout the year, and then quarterly, the supervisors will provide the employees a rating that they will then help the employees understand where they stand in their performance. As you see, where it talks about the quarterly and final performance review dates, because our performance evaluation process runs from November through October, when we talk about first quarter, that means November through January. The second quarter is February through April, third is May through July, and fourth is August through October. On the back, you'll find the county values. The Manager was telling you that we want to keep this in front of our employees. Every quarter, the employees will be evaluated on how well they're reflecting the county values. Now, they will not be included in the scoring, but they will be shown whether or not they are or are not reflecting the values. At the end of the year, there's a box there where it says total final score. That is the scoring that will be associated with the tier, which will then derive the pay-for-performance that the employee will receive. And then there's an area for comments for the supervisor and both the employee. So this is the one page that the supervisor and employees will be using throughout the year. Now, what will be used to guide those ratings are the two or three rating guides, which you have also. The first one is this one, that's blank. This one will be used for all positions. Now, the form itself is blank, but this is the form that the supervisors and the performance calibration teams will use to identify the SMART goals that are associated with the employee's position. It's directly connected to the employee's responsibility in their job description and to the new Cedric County strategic goals. As I said, we use the performance calibration teams to help ensure a consistent standard for setting the evaluation rating scale, and at the end of the year, ensuring the consistent application of the rating guides for the final score. The second form that all employees will be used to be evaluated on is the Employee Interpersonal Skill Rating Guide. The competencies and rating scale being used for the evaluation of all employees across the county is being captured in this one form. The competencies are listening skills, written and oral expression, information sharing, relationship building, and conflict resolution. For supervisors, there's an additional rating guide, and that's the Leadership and Employee Development Rating Guide. The competencies and rating scale being used for the evaluation of all supervisors across the county is in this form. Those competencies are cultural and business knowledge, leads within... Those competencies are cultural and business knowledge, leads with integrity, customer focus, makes effective decisions and takes accountability, flexible and adaptable, and employee development and engagement. In all three rating guides, the focus is on fully-meeting expectations, which is the three rating. This is what's important. This is what's expected for the performance of the employee's job, their interpersonal skills, and for supervisors, their leadership and employee development responsibilities. They're all clearly defined with SMART goals, so both the supervisor and employee have the same performance expectations. There are also measurements to clarify when a performance is falling short of expectations, and that would be a two rating, and that means it needs improvement, and it requires a performance improvement plan be implemented. Or there is a one rating, which equals does not meet expectations, and the employee will be placed on a disciplinary action. SMART goals are also established to clarify how an employee exceeds expectations, which is a four rating, or is truly outstanding, and that's a five rating. These, the last two handouts I provided you are the Career Pathways Tools, and these are tools that have been developed to aid employees in their career development here at Cedric County. It's employee self-directed. There's the Career Pathway Guidebook for all employees and a Supervisor's Toolkit to provide tips and information for supervisors on how to effectively manage their employee's expectation for career development. Our communications team has developed a short video to provide an overview of the Career Pathway Tool for our employees. There's also a video for the Supervisor's Toolkit, and both of these videos are available for viewing on E-line under County Forms, but I would like to share with you the Employee
Welcome to the Cedric County Career Pathways Guidebook. This program is designed to give you a better understanding of how you may develop and fulfill your employee experience and career here at Cedric County. Employees that engage in self-directed development have the opportunity to grow in their current job or prepare for a future position. There are three pathways in this program, including skill development, career ladder, and management development. These pathways reflect the county value of knowledge because they equip employees with the tools to grow and excel in their roles, help achieve the county's strategic goals, and more efficiently and effectively serve the citizens of Cedric County. This program is about you and your future with Cedric County. Do you love what you do? Are you ready to move up the ladder or change professions? What are some of your personal interests and strengths? Take a moment to think about where you are and where you'd like to go in Cedric County. Included on page two of the guidebook is a self-assessment that will help you review your professional interests and identify your skills and strengths. The skill development path on page three will assist you in determining how you can better enhance your experience here at Cedric County. You may decide that a different position will be a better fit for you. Go to the Career Ladder Path on page four of the guidebook and explore what you need to do in order to move into a new career at Cedric County. If you are satisfied with your current job, the skill development path is designed to help you strengthen and develop new skills. This pathway allows you to note renewal dates for licenses and certifications, cross-train and other functions associated with your job, which allows you to serve as a backup when necessary, and focus on current job competencies by taking relevant courses offered online and in the classroom. Think about areas in your job that you'd like to improve on or better understand. Work with your supervisor to develop new ways to enhance your skills. If you're looking to advance in your career, the Career Ladder Path is for you. Review job descriptions on E-line and determine what matches your interests and competencies. Make sure you look at the preferred or required education and what licenses and certifications are required to make you a preferred candidate. Experience is critical when applying for a new position, and it's Cedric County's desire to help you build on that experience. Continue to work with your supervisor on special assignments to develop your experiences and competencies. Additionally, attaining a career development certification in transition to supervisor, diversity, and professional development can provide you with greater understanding and skill sets to excel in a new job. The final pathway is the Management Development Path, found on page five of the guidebook. This is for employees currently in supervisory and management positions. Like the other pathways, this pathway is meant to strengthen competencies and leadership skills. Take time to reflect on what you're passionate about. The county is working on a mentorship program, and this could be an opportunity for you to provide your expertise and guidance to other employees. We're also working on putting together process improvement teams. Work with your supervisor to see if you can develop or lead one. See what external development programs or other developmental opportunities you can participate in based on your interest. Be watching for the Supervisory Competency Certification Program, launching in 2018, that all management will participate in to build and strengthen your competencies. The Career Pathway Development Plan on page six is something you'll need to work on with your supervisor to complete. Select the pathway you're interested in, and then talk to your supervisor to develop a plan that focuses on your job or chosen pathway. We're so glad you're here at Cedric County and know that you dedicate a lot of time and effort to help serve our citizens. We want you to have a positive employee experience and the opportunity to grow and fulfill your professional objectives.
Tony and his group did a terrific job on that. Really appreciate their work. Continuing on, as I mentioned, the Department of Corrections agreed to pilot the PME program this year, and Glenda Martins, the Director of Corrections, will share with you their experience.
Good morning. Well, the county manager brought up a very good point, which was our evaluations, our previous evaluations. For Corrections, they were 18 pages long, very cumbersome, very difficult for supervisors to fill out, and employees and supervisors, for whatever reason, were never, it was so subjective, they were, never seemed to be on the same page. And so it was a constant struggle every year. So when Eileen came to Corrections and said, hey, would you like to be the pilot of this program? Absolutely, we were on board. My supervisors had been asking for a new evaluation tool for a very long time. So when we started this process, we obviously worked through all the PME guidelines. MISA helped develop a PMI form for our employees to meet with supervisors every month. We started meeting with our staff quarterly on their PME. So the PME evaluation tool is not just end of year, it's every quarter. And so employees and supervisors are looking at the guidelines and saying, yeah, you know, this is the job that I'm doing, and the supervisor's looking at their list and going, yes, it is. And so what was happening between the supervisors and my employees is they were having a good discussion on where their job, what their job duties were and how they were accomplishing them, and they were on the same page. That was something that was not happening before. In 2016, I had 11 appeals for evaluations, and that's a lot, and that's before some of those even got to the appeal process. So supervisors and employees just weren't on the same page. With this new process and us developing the calibration teams and educating our staff on what that process would look like, I had 16 calibration teams meeting with my, for my 300 employees. And those were really meeting to make, the supervisors were bringing those evaluations to the calibration team without names of employees, but just really talking about their rating scales to be fair and consistent process, and we had 96 evaluations come before the calibration teams. Of those 96, 26 of them were adjusted up or down based upon what the calibration team thought that those scores should be. The supervisors agreed with those scores, and employees, when they met with those, the supervisors met with the employees, I had zero appeals last year, this last year. That tells you something. I have not heard one single negative comment from all of my employees over this process. And I say that because my team, my corrections team, are very vocal people. If they don't like something, I'm going to hear about it, and they have not complained. As a matter of fact, a lot of my supervisors came back from those calibration teams and realized, because they weren't a direct inline supervisor for that supervisor that was presenting, that they learned so much more about what was really happening on those different jobs. And that just kind of opened the door for them because they didn't realize the kind of work that was really going on with employees throughout the division. So it was a wonderful experience for them. We are meeting again December 28th to sort of reevaluate our guidelines and make sure that we adjust up or down because we noticed that there were employees that were scoring some of the fives that might have been, should have been fours, so we need to do some adjustments and with SMART goals. But the process was very fair. Employees felt like when they got done, they, their score was the one that they thought they should have, and it was based upon having the right kind of tools that they could look at and say, yes, I'm doing this job, I'm doing this job, yeah, I missed a few things, so maybe I do deserve an improvement plan. I had five improvement, performance improvement plans in that process, and I had no, no one denying that that was what should happen. Employees knew right off the bat where they should be, and so did supervisors, and it just put them on the very same page. So the process has been very positive. My team has worked with HR, Adele, Eileen, and MISA to really educate my staff on this process throughout this time, and I feel like we have really got a fabulous evaluation tool that my supervisors and employees really like. And so for us to be the pilot, it was a very good experience. We finished our evaluation, we're starting our new quarter, and I have still not heard any complaints or grievances. Of course, we had grumblings in the beginning, you know, having to develop those guidelines, and that takes a little bit of work because you have to really say what it is that employee needs to do to be satisfactory, or what they have to be to be a four or a five and to get those kinds of scores. And those have to be SMART scores, and they have to be something that the employee and the supervisors can identify. So it can't just be something out of the blue. And we were also able to look at the scoring and know that it was fair and consistent across the board. So, do you have any questions for me?
Well, that's a good report. I'm glad that you had a good outcome from that. Do you anticipate that going forward with this, that you will have to spend more time or less time in your organization to come to these evaluations?
Previously, we, a supervisor that was writing an evaluation would spend anywhere from four to six hours writing an evaluation, and then you think of the time that they spent sitting down and talking to the employee about it and maybe working through, you know, I mean, I would say anywhere from six to eight hours. This process, probably less than an hour from writing it to even sitting down with the employee. Because the employee is meeting every quarter, they know their score through the quarter. There's not a whole lot of subjectivity to it, and so it minimized it a lot. I mean, it went from huge to minimal.
I think Commissioner, you know, Glenda mentioned that, you know, there's short-term pain for long-term gain. I think when you're setting it up and when you're setting up the process, that's where the labor intensity comes in because you have to develop the job description, you have to develop the measures, and that piece of it is where the pain comes in. But that sets up for the future to where you don't have the time intensity that you would have had before. But you gotta start, you gotta set it up first. And across the board, across the organization, we actually have given the divisions and departments more time to transition to this, that I even extended it from 1 November to 1 February. So nobody felt rushed or pressured based off of the dynamics of the organization and day-to-day operations. But honestly, like Glenda said, once you get it in place, it's something that is continuously monitored, continuously touched, but that counseling and feedback and mentoring goes on continuously, which we just didn't have before. It was a one-shot, one-kill thing once a year.
And you interpret all those supervisors that are sitting down writing those evaluations, now what they're actually doing is spending more time doing the kinds of work in Corrections that they need to be doing rather than just sitting there thinking about how did this employee accomplish this goal? It's written out for them. It's very clear. Those are very specific guidelines, and the employee can just simply, in some of them, just circle them and say, yes, I'm doing this. And if this needs more of a description, they can write or type into it and show their supervisor right off the bat where they are in their evaluation. And the supervisor should be doing that, too, so when they meet monthly and then when they meet quarterly, they should be on the same page. And that's exactly what happened for us during this process. So we highly recommend it. We felt it was a good process. We are very encouraged. We have one day, we're doing one workshop to sort of adjust some of ours that we saw along the way, and that won't take much time, but we do have 46 PME guidelines to look at, and we'll get it done. And like I said, I have not had one complaint, so that's pretty good.
Well, good report. Thank you.
I have a question. So you mentioned that the Sheriff's Office had an evaluation that was 18 pages long?
Corrections.
Corrections did, okay. Is that something that was developed in-house over there, or is that something that was used outside that organization?
I, the way I understand, I think only Corrections had that 18-page evaluation.
So do the other organizations have their own unique, self-developed?
There was a seven-page form that everyone else used.
Okay, so our comparison right now is the 18-page form, which it sounds like this is a step in the right direction, but I'm curious, the one that had the seven-page form, are they going to be, is this going to take more time or less time for them, or do we have their input on the buy-in from their perspective?
We've been doing training for it throughout the year, and people have been, we did some focus groups early on in 16 to get feedback and information on what people liked about the process, the old one, and what they didn't. And certainly, the most, the biggest part of it was they felt that it was a waste of time, the form was too long, it was cumbersome, it didn't have any value, and they would love to have something that would be much shorter and easier to understand and more valuable.
To answer your question, you're going from seven pages down to one page. So in essence, you are, once you set it up, you will spend less time on it.
Yeah, I see that, I do, but you're going to visit this four times a year also. So it's going to be more often, which I think is good.
But typically, the thing that we want to promote is for supervisors and employees to have regular, ongoing meetings anyway, and then only once a quarter to capture the rating of where they are based on the rating guides, based on what's been established for the position, so that there's no surprise. The employee fully understands where the supervisor sees that they're at, the supervisor understands that the employee's on the same page, literally, with them in their performance.
Do we anticipate this being adopted and used in every department across the entire organization?
Except for the Sheriff's Office.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Glenda.
Now, this new process is, it doesn't take commission action to implement this. This is something you do internally?
Correct. The only thing that's going to take commission action is the pay plan.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
But the, the reason we're briefing them together is they're related.
Sure.
So to start out, we're going to have one measurable goal for 2018 for this program, and that's the reduction of appeals. We want to reduce our appeals by 75%. Based on Corrections' experience, we should be able to get very close to that goal. We will develop other specific goals for 2019 and beyond as we have the measurements in place. Those success measures are the attainment of the department's strategic goals, improved retention of high-tier performers, and improved scores from our annual employee engagement Our next steps for this is our PME introductory training is occurring now for both supervisors and employees. Those are separate training courses, and we're planning on completing that by the end of the year. We're doing the employees by department and division, and the supervisors are all, it's a collective, various times throughout, various sessions that supervisors can sign up for. We're using the first quarter, as the manager said, we're using the first quarter of this PME year, November through January, to prepare for our new PME program. It's going to launch February 1, and the items that have to be ready to go by February 1 include the development and establishment of the SMART goals for each position. Those have to be reviewed by the performance calibration team and the department's executives. The employees are to review their career pathways and have their Page Six ready to review with their supervisor. And the supervisors are supposed to meet with their direct reports and review all of the rating guides and discuss the employee's job description and the Page Six from their career pathways prior to the February launch, the February 1 launch. Then throughout the rest of the PME year, supervisors and employees will meet regularly to discuss performance, and for supervisors to provide coaching and guidance and feedback. And then quarterly, they will provide their employees with performance ratings. The employee's 2018 year-end evaluation rating will be based on the three quarters of the PME evaluation year, February through October 2018, with any associated salary increases going into effect January 2019. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Eileen. Commissioners, any questions? I don't see we have any more.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So Commissioners, the last thing I'd like to talk to you about is, and Lindsay and Tom can help in this, the SMG, obviously, that manages, we contract with to manage the interest banker arena, has been acquired by another company, Onex. It's very clear in the press release that they sent out on it that for them, they wanted to emphasize that we would see no change. It's business as usual. This acquisition would not affect day-to-day operations. They would not change their name as SMG. That's an important thing for us. But as, they now have a parent company named Onex that, that was just recently involved in an acquisition of SMG. But a little bit about Onex, founded, it was founded in 1984, and it's one of the most older, is one of the oldest and most successful investment firms. It acquires and builds high-quality business in partnership with talented management teams. So a little bit about Onex, and we'll pass around or get you a copy of this press release so you can see it. And Commissioners, four topics. I know it's a long one, but I appreciate your time and attention.
Is Onex a domestic company?
Canadian.
They're Canadian? Any? I just said, ooh. Commissioners, any questions about that or anything else?
A quick question. Are we going to have that MABCD funding that's going over to which dawn, next calendar?
Yeah, on the 20th. Yeah, next week's.
And it's all worked out?
Yes. Well, we have a two-year deal. It's worked out for 2018. Intermally worked out. Well, we'll be addressing it in two years. Maybe a little different then.
The attorneys are happy over there?
Not my job to be happy.
No. Not our attorneys. They're, they're the ones that are holding it up.
Commissioner, correction on that. Tomorrow, because the city did theirs today, so the agreement will be?
Ours is, ours is tomorrow, the city's will be next week.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. It's backwards.
So it's, so it's next week?
Ours is tomorrow, and city's is next week.
Okay. Do we have that? Do we have that in our backup?
Yes, in the backup, for sure. We'll make sure you get a copy of the revised agreement, that it has the change of some of the, really smart software. Been a couple things to make my ass real happy.
Okay, but I mean...
They don't always give it.
Well, what you're telling me is that we come out the way we wanted to come out on this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else, David?
That's all, thank you.
Commissioners, any? All right, anything else from staff that we need to talk about that we haven't? How about, go with Val, you're back. Everything's okay? And our, let's see, Karen, you got any?
Yeah, I know it.
Oh, well, that's impressive. Okay, if no one has anything to add, then we'll be adjourned. Thank you all.